Call to order, the Bucksport Town Council meeting. It's March 15th. This is a makeup meeting for March 8th. We were snowed out on the 8th. Road call, please, Kathy.
Mark Eastman.
Here.
Paul Rads.
Here.
David Key Adson. David Keen.
Here.
Peter Stewart.
Here.
Paul Donovan Adson. Robert Clonklin. Councilor Key has asked for an excused absence for this meeting.
That's a new issue.
So noted. Okay, item three is presentation of any town council recognitions. We have a couple tonight. First one. First one being the high school girls wrestling team state championship. Susan?
I'm very pleased to welcome you all here this evening. We were notified that the girls wrestling team had achieved state championship status, which is certainly to be congratulated, but as always, there's a lot involved. All of you and all of your hard work, all of your parents and family's support, and really good coaching. So I have certificates for each of you team members. And as I call your name, if they've come up and turn and face the audience so that the man with the camera can get your pictures, that would be really good. And I hope I've spelled everybody's name right. I spelled them exactly like it was given to me. So Alyssa McGuire. The Bucksport Town Council hereby recognizes Alyssa McGuire as a member of the 2018 state championship girls wrestling team. The effort of every team member contributes to the success of the entire team. Your credit to your family, your school, and your community. Congratulations. Abby Hanscom. The Bucksport Town Council hereby recognizes Abby Hanscom as a member of the 2018 state championship girls wrestling team. The effort of every team member contributes to the success of the entire team. Your credit to your family, your school, and your community. Thank you. Paige Anderson. Not there? Okay. If you can get that back. B. Bernier. The Bucksport Town Council hereby recognizes B. Bernier as a member of the 2018 state championship girls wrestling team. The effort of every team member contributes to the success of the entire team. You are credit to your family, your school, and your community. Signed, Mayor David Keen. Maya. Did I get that right? Okay, Maya Moran. The Bucksport Town Council hereby recognizes Maya Moran as a member of the 2018 state championship girls wrestling team. The effort of every team member contributes to the success of the entire team. Your credit to your family, your school, and your community. Thank you. And finally, I'm probably not going to get this right. Kia?
That's Kaya.
Kaya? I'm sorry. I had to get one wrong. The Bucksport Town Council hereby recognizes Kaya Wilson as a member of the 2018 state championship girls wrestling team. The effort of every team member contributes to the success of the entire team. Your credit to your family, your school, and your community. Signed, Mayor David Keen. I would also like to recognize Coach Anthony McGuire, who has coached these fine young women. Also, I wanted to let you know that you will be receiving a gift certificate for a pizza party for the team from the town, and good wishes, and we look forward to seeing more of you in the future. So thank you very much. We can have the whole team come up?
Yeah, have the whole team come up so we can see them on the TV.
You can eat now.
With your coach?
Make sure you smile for the TV now.
That's right, because you're on TV, too. And the internet. We're video streaming.
We have another award tonight. Anthony Wardwell, state champion for the second year in a row for diving.
Being part of a team when everybody else on your team is in your school is one thing. Being part of a team when you have to travel to be part of that team is a bit more difficult and presents more challenges, but you have exhibited excellence not only this year, but for many years, and have achieved state championship status for both 2017 and 2018. And considering all that you go through in order to pursue your passion for diving, you are to be congratulated. And we have a certificate here for you that says, "The Bucksport Town Council hereby recognizes Anthony Wardwell, who won a main state diving championship for 2017 and 2018. Excellence is the result of hard work, practice, and dedication. Your efforts are a source of pride for your family, your school, and your community." Thank you very much. I'm Martina Pauline, Anthony's coach, and you will be receiving a gift certificate as well for dinner here in Bucksport. The town, this community is blessed to have such great young people who accomplish so much, but as much as winning a state championship is wonderful, what is really impressive is your dedication to your sport and your school, and how hard you work to do all of this. So you're all to be commended. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go on to item four. Consider minutes of previous meetings. We have some minutes from February 22nd, 2018. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion and second to approve the minutes from February 22nd, 2018. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. On to item five. Receive and review correspondence and documents. We have a letter from Chris Johnson, planning board resignation. Susan?
Yes, Chris has tendered his resignation from the planning board, as he states, for personal and health reasons. He's been an excellent member of that board and actually a big volunteer for the town in many ways. We hope that he reconsider's at some point and comes back to serve on town committees. I know he's still working with heart and soul, but we shall miss him for sure on the planning board.
Okay, we're going to go to item seven. Discussion items for managers clarification or direction or council discussions. First one being finance committee update, Spectrum line extension. Rich, have anything on that?
The, I have some, and Rich does, too, but the finance committee didn't meet tonight because it didn't have a quorum. And the deadline for submitting a grant to Connect Me is March 30th. And the, so the request for the council, and it's down on a further agenda, is to allow the town to apply for that Connect Me grant for this work. It doesn't obligate you to money until or unless you actually receive the grant and then you make that. The anticipated amount from Spectrum is between $25,000 and $30,000 that would be required as the town's share of the cost of these line extensions. But as I said, there's not an obligation if you allow the grant to be submitted, but if we don't do it now, there's no other meeting date at which you can do it prior to the 30th to allow it. Rich has been in constant contact with Spectrum over pricing and et cetera. Do you have more on this, Rich, that you?
Sorry? Yeah, we had everything lined up with Spectrum, and then they found another oversight on their behalf. The grant's completely written and just waiting for authorization and final numbers from them. Yesterday afternoon, they contacted me, letting me know they left something out, and I didn't hear back by 5:00 o'clock tonight. But the, they're putting in a sum of money as well, so not only is Connect Me putting in 50%, the town will put in 50% minus what Spectrum's going to include in. At this point, it's over $20,000 that Spectrum's including in this, and that number should only go up because the project cost is going to go up slightly. It's to include seven more houses that was inadvertently left off on Spectrum's part.
Thank you.
Yeah, six A and B, which were food sovereignty and committee structure, there was no ordinance committee meeting, and we, those will be moved forward to the next as well.
Okay, we're going to go on to seven C, which is appointment committee update, annual appointments. Got a list of appointments here. First one being registered voters. Kathy Downs.
Which we did.
We did that last.
Which we did last week. Street naming. Jeff Hammond. Harbor master, Mike Hornsby. Deputy Harbor master, David Grant. Zoning Board of Appeals, Richard Tennant. Parks and Recreation, Richard Sprague. George Watkins. Conservation Committee, Leonard Fluid. Sadie Alley-Ferreira. And John Christopher. We do have two openings on the planning board for five-year terms, and we also have an opening on the Board of Assessment Review. And we have a recommendation for the Park and Recreation Committee for Rich Rotella. You know that? Okay. So how would the council like to proceed?
Make a motion. We take him as a group and include Rich Rotella, accept his recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and seconded to accept the recommendations for appointments. Anything from the public? From the count, oh.
The ones that I have indicated that are opening, that have openings, we're taking applications at the present time, and we'll take them up at our next council meeting, which would be?
April 12th.
I just want people to know that have submitted applications, they will be reviewed and taken up at that time.
Okay, thank you. Any further from the council? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes? Okay, we're going to go on to item D, just tax-acquired property bid results. Susan?
Okay, we had approximately a month ago put out bids for all foreclosed properties, which the town hadn't been able to contact or work out agreements with owners. And since that time, I'm pleased to report that since the initial list went out, that five property owners have come forward and paid all outstanding tax costs and interest. So though, even though they went out to, three of the five went out to bid, those bids were not opened because the record owners paid the taxes, and the goal here is for tax payment, not property acquisition. The town received a number of bids on several properties. They were, some property, it received bids on seven properties, and it did not receive bids on eight properties. The eight properties that it didn't receive bids on are very, either very small parcels of land, and when I say very small, I mean .13, .3 acres, or in one case, there's a lease holding on the land that makes it a complicated property that people were not interested in bidding. But we did receive bids, as I said, on seven of these. You have the list in your packet. When we get down there, I am in hopes that you vote to accept the high bids for these properties. And for the properties where we didn't get bids, that are the land only, it's my intent to contact the butters to those properties to see if there's any interest from the butters in acquiring those small parcels as add-ons to those lots, rather than continuing to keep them as these tiny pieces that really are of no benefit to anyone other than the butter, actually. So we'll be moving forward to that. We had a lot of interest in this, but this list and these properties represent the entire list. Once this list is reconciled, the only other properties that are in that status are in that status, but people are making regular payments on these properties, which is, has been the criteria all along, that as long as people are making an effort and making regular payments to retain the property, that we've not put anything out for foreclosure and that, for anyone who's been doing that. So that's where we are.
Thank you. I will give an opportunity now, if some of your kids have to get home for homework or whatever, feel free to walk out. We won't get mad at you.
Thank you.
Again, congratulations. Okay, we're going to go to item E, schedule changes for the fire department. Susan?
First, I'd like to recognize that we have a number of our firefighters here in the back row. If you'd like to stand up and be recognized so that everyone can see you. Anyone who's been on the council or been attending meetings here for any length of time has heard me say from time to time, and sometimes more than time to time, that our full-time personnel was being worked extraordinary numbers of hours beyond what was healthy or reasonable in terms of that. And we've talked for a year and a half about additional personnel, and we applied for a grant and received it to add two full-time firefighter, EMT, paramedics to the staff for, on a three-year grant period, and we're fortunate enough to receive that grant. But I can tell you that even if we hadn't received the grant, we would have had to have done something different than we were doing in terms of staffing because the number of hours that these people are working is beyond. When I'm looking at payrolls every two weeks and I see 180 hours, that's just not reasonable in terms of what we're doing. So we've been talking, months ago, months ago, we started a dialogue with the fire department when we knew that we were going to be adding personnel about how best to structure a work week that would allow, now that there are two additional people, to have two people on per shift. Right now, we have one and rely on callback provision, which means essentially people never go off duty because they're, once they've gone, they're still on callback and something else happens. So the full-timers got together and reviewed schedules from departments all over and came up with the one that's presented here, which is a 56-hour week, 53 hours of regular time, three which ends up in a comp time bank. And while 53 hours sounds like a lot, it doesn't sound like a lot when your norm is 80 and more, because this schedule gets rid of the callback provision, meaning that they stop, they stop going off duty and then not being able to do anything because they come next. And it, I've looked over the numbers, what this results at, and their current work week is 42 hours, so anything over 42 goes into overtime. At 56 hours, it's 53 hours of straight time without a callback provision. So it, financially, it's not a big impact to the system in order to do this, but it does give two-person coverage per shift, eliminate the callback provision, and allow the people who work in the department a more normalized schedule in that they're not, they're not continually on call. So that's the provision. There, the fire department is a union shop, and the current schedule is incorporated into the contract, and so in order to move forward with this, it needs an amendment to the contract that changes Article 15, which is the definition of work week and hours and those kind of things. I have to tell you that this group has been amazing to work with, and they care very much about this community, but they also recognize that we've reached a point where the schedule needs to do something different in order for them not to go look somewhere else or not to burn out of what they're doing, which is not what we want them to do. But anyway, that is, that's where we are. That's, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I'm sure that the department members who are here, if anyone has questions about what these discussions have been or why we're doing it, that would, I'd be happy to, I'm sure they'd be happy to answer as well. David? Do you folks have anything that you'd like to add to my explanation?
I have one quick question. We hired two, we have two folks we've hired, so.
We have one, we have one right now because the other one backed out. We have a second add-out, and we have an applicant that they're going to be talking to, but this would start April 1st.
So there will be somebody then that has to fill another shift? I mean, if we're talking about having two people and, you know, six people is how this is going to work, right, Chris? So, but you only have five now.
Correct.
So number six is going to be one of you folks filling that shift?
It won't be one of us filling it. We'll probably end up splitting the days at least for the month of April. What it boils down to is seven shifts in the month that potentially, until we hire someone new, could only be one or two, depending on when the hiring happens and when they're actually brought on board. But we're expecting by the end of the month, we'll have somebody else hired to fill that position. So we're only looking at seven shifts per se.
How do you, how do you accommodate for vacations and stuff like that? Is that?
Still posted and filled by us and reserves, as it is now.
And I don't know how it is now. I guess that's why I'm asking to make sure that.
Turn light.
What constitutes a shift? 24 hours? 12 hours? What is a shift?
With the, with the new schedule, it'll be 24.
So you're actually going to work in a day 24 hours?
Any other questions from the public? We're going to be taking this up under.
Just one more quick one. Just so I make sure, on overtime, it's like this, concerned, what's the most hours that you can work in a row according to your contract?
On this, on this new one?
I guess what we're going, so say.
48 hours, I think.
48?
The provision's there for 48. The way the rotating schedule works, there are some days where there's a shift in between you work a day, you're off a day, you work a day.
Right.
So the provision was put in there to prevent someone actually having to work 72.
Three in a row? Okay. So that won't happen then? That's what you're saying, right?
Right. No firefighter shall work more than 48 consecutive shifts.
I saw that. I just want to make sure that's, that's how I understand. So you can't get called in, that doesn't supersede being called in, right?
Correct.
48. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, we're going to be taking that up under general items. I'll go to.
Can I just, I just had a question. Have you considered at all, or I know it's a union contract, going to PTO, pay time off versus sick, comp, and vacation? Did you, have you experienced that in any of your towns that you've worked in?
We haven't. I haven't.
We, I mean, we went to that. It's just, it's much cleaner, neater, just to have a bank of paid time off versus trying to.
The, there will be negotiations again in 2019, this coming year, so if that's something the council wants to look at or the union wants to look at, we can, that's another option. That's what it is.
There are a lot in the, in the industry now, and I don't know how much in government it happens, but in businesses, people have gone away to, from, you know, a separate vacation bank, sick bank, and personal day bank, if that's what they're given, and just lumping it all together and calling it paid time off. So, you know, it eliminates, from the business's standpoint and the employees, you know, if you're sick, you're sick, if you want, if you, you don't have to worry about calling it sick leave or, you know, if you're not so sick that you don't want to go to, go to work and you request a day off, it's just paid time off. It's, it, there's no, no game playing that way, and it's much, just much cleaner to track, much cleaner to manage. There are some, you know, there are some things legally that you have to do, different differences with how you use PTO if you, when you retire or when you leave, what you're paid, what you need to do, but it's just another alternative to the traditional.
Okay, we're going to go on to item F, which is discussing the March 22nd meeting. Susan?
We had a meeting scheduled for March 22nd, and then came to my attention that the Chamber of Commerce annual meeting is that evening, and the chamber is an organization that not only supports our local businesses, but that the town supports financially pretty significantly as well. And this year, our very own town clerk, Kathy Downs, was nominated for one of the awards that was given out by the chamber, and while that wasn't successful, it's an honor for the nomination, and I think it would be. it's an honor for the nomination and I think it would be fitting if the council attended that annual meeting and selected the chamber and Kathy, and that we combine what was going to be on that 3/22 budget meeting on April 5 and then move forward with the schedule.
Any discussions on that? Our next meeting will be April 5. All right?
What will happen is the items on the 22nd will be on the fifth agenda. That's a separate night, so there's room available.
That was a budget meeting anyway, wasn't it?
Yes, and so is the fifth.
Six o'clock.
Yes, six o'clock on the fifth.
You want to take a vote on that or is it just consensus?
Consensus.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? Okay. We're going to go on to item G, chamber building condition discussions. Susan?
Last, well, actually, March 6. The code officer received a call from the chamber director that there was a strong mildew odor in the building and it was causing respiratory issues for both her and her assistant. Mr. Hammond also visited the property, as did one of our firefighters, Mike Dunning, and observed the same thing, which is a musty scent. They didn't discover anything, but the employees couldn't stay there. There was in 2014, an evaluation done of this building and we included a copy of that with the packet. The town owns that building. It has more issues than odor, but that's the most current one that's making it impossible for the chamber to use it in its current status. So the question is, for the council is, what action do you want to take on that building? There's, I'll leave it there. What action do you want to take on the building? The, it's had an environmental review. It's...
How much space do they occupy in that building? I know they've got the upper floor and...
Because they use the basement too for storage.
But I mean, for actual use space that they're in is, I mean, storage is one thing that can be addressed too. Sometimes it's a good thing to clean things out instead of have to set it down.
Yeah. And there's a need on Main Street for commercial space.
Do you have an idea of how, and again, we're just finding this out or we've known about it, but is there, Jeff, was there of an idea of how much it would cost when this was done in 2014 to...
I don't believe there was.
There wasn't?
No.
I know what my initial thought is. I'll be the first to tear it down and get them out of there and move them to another spot that's, we have plenty of empty spaces on Main Street that I think we can accommodate where they're at, at the lease charge or whatever it is. But that, I hate to say it, but it's an eyesore of what we're trying to do here in town and what we're trying to build things up. And if the building is inhabitable now, even if they weren't there, we try to get somebody to be in.
Jeff, do you feel it's inhabitable or needs...
As we said in this letter.
Or needs updating?
Shouldn't be occupied.
I mean, in its present state.
Right.
It's my opinion that the air quality there is unsafe for the occupants. I made that observation through my own personal experience of breathing the air. So I didn't want to be in there. And the two occupants that were there were having respiratory issues that they attributed to the air they're breathing.
Sure. But I mean, I guess the question is, is the building salvageable?
Could it be re...
Yeah, could somebody do something else with it?
I understand the foundation's got, it's cracked pretty bad, too.
I learned that just recently. I haven't seen the crack. It's hidden behind some materials or furniture in the basement. But according to the chamber director, there was a large crack in the foundation that was presumably repaired. But, so it's an old building and the environmental report recommended that it be subjected to a serious cleaning. The air ducts of the building haven't been cleaned at all, I don't think. They're just filled with dirt. And every time the floor kicks on, the dust coming out of there is, can't be healthy to breathe that either. The carpet has been there forever and the report recommended that be replaced with some vinyl or wood flooring that doesn't have the same problems that carpet has from high use. The building is poorly insulated. The attic has an R7 in it where R38 is typical. And so, you know, there's no hot water heater in the building now. It's been there for quite some time, I guess. So there are issues with the building. There's one space in the basement that's filled with old moldy books and the attic is filled with old town records that are just scattered all over the place and just filled with dust up there. You wouldn't want to go up there without some respirator on. But could the building be repaired? It probably could be repaired. And all these things could be addressed. But to what expense, I guess, is something you have to think about.
Well, that's my concern is we have a lot of these buildings around that people don't want to spend money on to get them fixed now. I mean, we've got one across the street, the flower shop.
Yep.
That's been for sale for a long time. That, I don't think is anywhere near the condition that this one is in from what I'm hearing. And I don't know, I'm asking the question. Is it comparable to...
Comparable to what?
The old flower shop? I mean, that's in dire need of some help and that's been sitting there for so long.
Yeah. That has other issues that...
I mean, they both have issues, I guess, is the question.
Jeff, I mean, I'll throw something up. Don't shoot me here, but, you know, we've got options of, you know, you could tear it down, you could try to sell it.
At least test the market and see.
Test the market. Or you could tear it down and the town build a space for a community center or a community, you know, we talk about with the Heart and Soul Group, that building shutting down at the end of March, that it's become sort of a focal point for people to meet and groups to meet. And there's not really a place downtown to do that. So maybe you could combine the chamber and a community's meeting area in a new building if the town wanted to do it. But then there's the, you know, the market, maybe it's better to do it. We don't want to be necessarily in the business of building buildings and...
And is Main Street the best place?
In place of retail.
Because we need more square footage.
I look at it as two things. One is we've got to get the people that are in there out of there because the town is liable. It's our building. And then, then it's what do you want to do after that? Do you want to see if there's a market to sell it? Or is it more valuable to the town to tear it down and have somebody put something else there? Whether it be the town or somebody else, I don't know. But the building's old, it's outused, it's usefulness. And I think it's time to tear it down and open up that space.
I wouldn't be a part of the tearing it down. I think you can, I mean, I think it's dark concrete basement. It has enough that you could at least try to sell it. Yeah. Because if we tear it down, I mean, then we've just got an empty hole if nobody comes in to do it.
Yeah, but see, there's got to be a plan behind it before we make the decision. You say it, there's got to have a good plan to fill that.
Move the chamber out of there, get them into a decent place, and then check the market, see if there's a market for it. If there's no market for it, then we sure and heck don't want to leave it standing there for the next 15, 20 years.
Oh, I agree with you there.
So...
Paul, what do you think?
I was thinking about the, if it's structurally sound, why not remove the moldy books? Who wants to read, say they're pretty well shot, get it out of the ceiling and the material out of the basement. There are technologies out there today that you can clean all the duct, I mean, if it needs a new floor, duct work has to be cleaned, et cetera. I assume the fire department took some sort of meter readings and there wasn't anything on the meter. So as opposed to, if it's good enough to be sold and someone's going to go in there and do that, why don't we save the building, do the cleaning, put in the hardwood floor and be a lot less expensive than putting up a new building as an option at two cents.
Go ahead.
I agree that the chamber right now needs to occupy another location. I question whether the town needs to own more space on Main Street. We have the best lot in town and we're sitting in it. And I'm not positive from a development standpoint whether creating another space for town use, you know, that if this building is going to be something else, maybe it's time for it to be something else with a end. Although the town could fix it if, if we're looking at private investment to do work and private investment, because the chamber isn't a town organization, I mean, it's, the town provides space in their building because their budget is limited for that. But it, I don't take this to the line, it's not like we're looking to displace the fire department or the police, you know, a normal budgetary obligation of the community. And I think there may be some other spaces on Main Street, not right next to us, that may be available. I have to tell you, when I first got this, because we've had, we had leaks in the roof fixed and we've had the furnace issues addressed, but the, I personally think it goes beyond carpeting and ductwork. I think the building is sick. And that sounds silly, but there are sick buildings and I think that's one of them. So, you know, maybe somebody can heal it or cure it. I would prefer that with someone other than the town trying to make that rehab. You've heard me say before that I'm not a fan of growing acquisitions bigger, or if we can make them smaller, that's not a bad thing either.
I just, I would hate to see a hole there that would be, you know...
Hell of a view.
So we could work with the chamber to find them an alternate location prepared of time. And if you want, put that building on the market and see what happens. I mean, you could...
And there's no harm and there's no expense.
Okay. Okay, I'm going to ask for any public input on this.
Yes, hello folks. Just going to take a minute here. I sent Sue Lassard and Mayor Keen an email saying that why not use the Rosen's building, a heart and soul, until you find a temporary, well, it could be a temporary fix for the chamber. Also, it's got a handicap accessible bathroom. So I think that that'd be a good idea, just for the time being, until they can find a solution. And, I mean, it'd be a perfect spot. It'd be perfect for meetings, perfect for office work. They could also bring that, you know, the room that they have that's open 24/7, but kind of corner off the side where you can have like all the brochures and stuff like that for travel. Did I give my box hands?
Thank you. Dawn?
Yeah, I think Jeff left one thing out. I was in there, oh, I don't know, four or five months ago after we'd had a horrendous weekend rainstorm. And those girls were mopping up everything in sight, picking up papers that were just absolutely drenched. The roof also needs fixing. You know, I think Sue is right. It's a sick, it's a sad, sick building.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
How much expenses, how much expenditure have we put into the building at this point over, let's say, the past five years?
I'm not sure the exact amount.
I'm not sure of the exact amount, Jim, in the last five years. I know that most recently was the furnace cleaning bill and the roof repairs, which was, I believe, about $3,500 that the town...
So it's $10,000 in that recently?
Yeah, within the past two years, yes.
And how is it, how is it the responsibility of a citizen in this town to take care of the Chamber of Commerce? That's an organization made up of the business owners in town. It shouldn't be a responsibility to them to see if they can get their Chamber of Commerce somewhere where they, you know, it's safe for them to work. I mean, it's like, I don't understand why it's a responsibility to the town or the town council to decide.
Again, I think that's basically what we're saying, is that, you know, it's time for them to find another place and, you know, we'll assist them with trying to find it. But again, that building is a sick building and I don't think we need to hold a liability anymore of having people in there or an organization in there. It's not only people that are working there every day, but the people that are coming in there constantly, too. So we need to...
Is it a requirement, as they serve businesses on both sides of the bridge, so to speak, is it in surrounding communities, is it a requirement that they stay here in Bucksport? Could they relocate?
I mean, they're a regional chamber, so, yeah, they can go anywhere. But we have supported them in the past.
When I say assist, I didn't mean write a check.
Right.
I think there's, there are organizations that may have space and where they could coexist well, that would be an asset to these other organizations so that they could do the same kind of expense thing that they do now, which is they don't pay rent, but they pay expenses for their location. I just meant assisting them in finding that.
But they come to the council during the budget process, just like any other organization.
Yep.
And it isn't like they're an entity of the town.
Sure.
Do we really need to take a vote or a recommendation or...
Looking for direction here. The direction is, we're going to put this out.
I'd like to make a recommendation that we actually assist them, not monetarily, assist them in finding another location and then possibly try to market the building for a few months and see what the interest is and then come back to the council, say by June, with the recommendation for...
Where are they now?
They're working out of home.
What's that?
They're working out of home.
They're working out of home?
Yeah. The roof's still leaking when we get...
I was going to say, they're not in the building, right?
No, they're not in the building. They did go back in Monday to do payroll and Alicia went in. Alicia has less allergies than Leslie and the smell is still overbearing.
Okay, so I guess what I'm saying, why is anybody going in there at all? They shouldn't be going in there at all. If Jeff has said that the place, they shouldn't be in there, then why are we letting them in there to even do payroll?
Only because their stuff isn't there. And so that if we say you can't do it, they need to take their computer systems and that kind of stuff.
I think they need to. I'm going by what, from what I hear from Jeff, what I hear from the fire department, that place is not safe to be in. And I agree with David, is that we shouldn't accept any liability for having folks in there if we've been told that they're not to be in there.
So that's my recommendation.
Yeah, I support that.
You try to sell it.
See what happens.
All those in favor of that recommendation? Opposed? Recommendation passes? Okay, we'll ask them to vacate the premises?
We'll find a, or help find a place to go in the temporary business anyway until they can find a full time. But, you know, you're right, they've been in there. And this most recent odor thing that's come up is new. It's not, it's something different, worse than it has been in the past.
Okay, but with the understanding if the building is sold, they have to bring it back up to code.
Be able to occupy.
It's probably up to code, but I mean, it has to be certified, occupied. It's probably up to code, but I mean, it has to be certified, occupiable. Okay, we're going to go on to the agenda items. First one being to adopt, resolve R 2018-41 to approve the application for Connect Me grant for cable line extensions to Millvale and Bucks Mills. I know you don't have the information, Rick, but do we want to at least pass this so that if you do get the information, we can go ahead and process it?
The grant's all completed, I just didn't put the numbers in.
Okay. How would the council like to proceed?
Second.
We have motion and second to approve the resolve 2018-41, cable line extension to Millvale and Bucks Mills, apply for a grant. Anything further from the public? From the council?
This is, I mean, if we get the numbers and they're absolutely stupid numbers, then we don't, we don't have to accept the grant correctly.
That's right, we don't have to accept the grant.
Just want to make sure that, let everybody know that. I won't let everybody know that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Yeah, okay.
Opposed? You got something?
No.
Okay, item B, to adopt resolve R 2018-47 to approve the sale of tax-acquired property. How would the council like to proceed? We have motion and second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council?
Just the proceeds from this, they cover the back taxes.
And any excess goes into the town's fund balance.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item C, to adopt resolve R 2018-48 to amend the fire department contract.
That was set for April 1st when I was going to take a fact, is that correct?
Yes.
And this has already been approved by, by the union?
I met with the union and, yes.
Okay. Anything further from the public on this? From the council? All those in favor? Both, motion passes.
I did. I was about ready to say it and then he went.
Trying to move this thing along.
I was very quiet.
I'd just like to thank the department members who worked so hard on this schedule and not only for that, what you did every day anyway, but your, your help was greatly appreciated in figuring out a solution to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan, for sitting down with us. We appreciate it.
Okay, we're going to go on to item D, adopt resolve R 2018-49 to approve drainage study cost of $5,000. Susan?
You would ask for estimate from the engineers to look at behind, to give us options for behind Main Street and Woodland Heights and Forest Hills? And it's $5,000. I just need, this is to approve that this $5,000 be taken from highway improvements reserve for this study. It's a reserve account, you need to have a motion on it.
Some move. We have motion and second to approve the resolve. Anything further from the public? From the council?
I just have a simple question. Is this done on a, oh, lost my train of thought, done on a time and materials basis? In other words, if they don't, if they don't reach the five, it's billed at actual, that's what I was looking, it's billed at actual, not to exceed $5,000.
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes? Go on to item nine, resignations, appointments and assignments. We did have the one resignation we had talked about earlier, Chris Johnson's from the planning board. Item 10, approve quick claim deeds. We have Dwayne Weston sewer liens for 2015, 16, and tax liens for 2012 to 2017 for MAP 29, Lot 11. How would the council like to proceed?
Second.
We have motion and second to approve the quick claim deed for Dwayne Weston. Anything further from the public? The council? All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes. Item 11, town manager's report.
There will be a public information meeting, Whole Oceans, the land-based salmon farm that's looking to come to Bucksport, will be holding a public information meeting in regard to their project that they're proposing for location at the former mill site. It's at 6:00 PM at the Performing Arts Center at the middle school on Tuesday, March 20th. They will be presenting information regarding the project and answering questions that people may have. We encourage people to attend and find out what this project is and how it all would work. As to the budget schedule, canceling the 3/22 meeting to allow the council to attend the Chamber of Commerce annual meeting, we'll move the budget items that would be discussed at that meeting to the April 5th meeting and the items from April 5th to April 12th. We are then back on track. There was not a quorum available for a meeting on March 29th, which is why we did not meet them. Docks and floats. Despite the continuing snow, we have made plans for installation of the Marina and Town docks on May 1st of this year. That will give time enough for everything to be hooked up before the marina season starts on May 15th. Hold on, folks, bring in some that actually are on the way, or at least I'm told they are. For an IT proposal, at the next council meeting, I'll be bringing forward a proposal to contract for IT services with RSU 25. Chris Grindel, our former IT person, is now on staff as a firefighter EMT. We share internet service and phone service with the RSU and a contract with them would allow us to get whatever level of service we need when, when we need it, whether that be administrative or technical, in a way that would be more difficult for us to hire one person to do from here to here, depending on what the needs are. An update on our fire chief. Chief Baden has been dealing with some health issues for the past month or so. I met with him today and he anticipates return to work within the next two weeks. And MDOT projects, I have received notification of three MDOT projects that will impact Bucksport this summer. One is a 9.36 mile overlay on Route 15 from .51 miles north of Franklin Street, north 9.36 miles into Orington. The second is on Verona Island and these are butts, but they still impact us, is approximately a one-mile overlay project. And the third is a 1.6 mile section in Orington on Route 15. It is also anticipated that the Verona Bridge project will be happening this year. That was discussed at a public meeting last year. And finally, I received a notification today that Main Water, we have a sewer contract with, for operation of our treatment facility and who operates Main Water for our public water supply. Their parent company, Connecticut Water, has merged with the SJW Group to create one of the nation's largest water and wastewater utilities. The new service population will be over 1.5 million people in Connecticut, Maine, California and Texas. However, according to the information I've received, nothing is changing in local personnel or organization and this, this merger is supposed to be completed by the end of 2018. A press release was issued on that today in regard to this. And I was contacted by Rick, who had Main Water, about, about this.
Any questions from the public on any of those items? From the council? If not, we'll go on to item 12, set public hearings, hold public hearings, approve of any licenses or permits. We'll do the licenses first. First license is food service license for Donald Martell and Kenneth Soucy, Friar Brothers' brew house taproom. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have motion and second to approve the food service license for Friar's brew house taproom. Anything from the public? From the council?
Any opening?
Saint Joseph's?
Saint Joseph's?
We're hoping by the end of next week. We're hoping by the end of next week because if it's not by the end of next week, the week after that will.
It will hopefully recreate.
So, it's not going to be that week for sure. So, perhaps the end of next week, but we may push it into the week after Easter, depending on if we can get all our leaves crossed and I have to get up here and brew.
Congratulations.
Well, thanks for coming to Bucksport too. All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes? Next one is liquor license and food service license for Jeff, Scott and Tim Ledbetter doing business at Hobby View Grill. Do we, we don't have to have a?
No, you don't have to have a public hearing.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have motion and second to approve the liquor license and food service license for Hobby View Grill. Anything from the public? From the council?
What is the opening this year?
You got a date?
I don't have a date.
If there was anything on there.
All those in favor? Opposed, motion passes? Okay, next is a draft contact zone agreement ordinance. Declare the public, you're set for this? Okay. Declare the public hearing open. Peter? Go ahead.
I was going to say.
Jeff, Jeff.
So, this is the second reading of the draft contract zone agreement that you first took a look at at your February 22nd meeting, I think, or your last meeting, I forget what date that was. And you asked that there be one change made in the language that had to do with the restriction of tenants in the mobile home park, 55 and older. So, that language has been stricken from the agreement. Mr. Hawes is here tonight in case you have any questions about his plan, but as I understand it, that the mobile home park is proposed for up to 60 lots, although it may not be exactly 60 when all is said and done with the design of the site for septic systems and stormwater management. It's in a zone that currently does not allow mobile home parks, which is why we're going through this contract zone process. If the, if this contract zone agreement is approved by the council, Mr. Hawes then will next return back to the planning board for subdivision review. Once he gets through that process, then he'll be speaking to DEP about their permitting. There'll be a couple permits they'll need to get from DEP. They'll also need to get an entrance permit from MDOT because Central Street is a state road. And so, he has some work ahead of him, but tonight, he's asking for you to approve this contract zone agreement as amended.
And this had planning board approval, correct?
It did, yes. They held, they held a public hearing and received a few comments. No opposition was expressed during that phase.
Sir, the, I wrote an email to the town manager this afternoon and she then forwarded things on to Jeff. The document that's in our packet is, at the top, it says Town Council First Reading, February 22nd. And then, under the, for this meeting tonight, it stated 3/18, which has to do with the cancellation of the storm. But at the last town council meeting, I think I was the one that brought up on page two of the document under section three, item number five, it read before, "The mobile home park shall have a written policy limiting the occupancy to citizens 55 years of age or older," period. "Any changes to this limitation must be approved by the Bucksport Town Council." I think what I brought up at the last town council meeting was to only strike that last sentence of "any changes to this limitation must be approved by the Bucksport Town Council." I didn't see any reason for the town council to be involved with any kind of rules that were agreed upon between the developer and a homeowner, whether they be a homeowners' association, whatever gets filed with the registry of deeds in the, in the county. That was the only thing that I suggested we, we strike out of there. The mobile home park have a limiting occupancy of citizens of 55 or older, period. I believe that should stay. Further, on the first page, who about the, hmm, one, two, three, four, fourth or fifth paragraph down, "The owner would like to develop the property with 60 lots, mobile home park for senior citizens," parentheses, "the project." And so, it's my understand, I thought this was going to remain a senior citizens development. So, that's the first thing I have. The second issue I had is what impact would be with Whole Oceans coming in about the watershed? And you've already said that the DEP still has to get involved and I think I just heard you say that all this is going back to the planning board.
Right.
So, with this new development, I, I think that will be, be taken care of. But I'd like to see that going back to page two, item three, number five. The only thing be stricken will be "any changes to this limitation must be approved by the Bucksport Town Council."
The discussion that the council had about that at the last meeting, I forgot who made this comment, but it pointed out that that's the condition of this contract zone agreement, meaning that if the property owner fails to meet that condition, it jeopardizes the agreement. So, and there was kind of like a straw poll taken about whether or not that language should be taken out. And I got the impression that most of you, if not all of you, thought that that language should be removed. That was my impression when I left the meeting and that's why it was taken out.
Yeah, I think I did bring that up, Paul, but did it need, do we need to regulate if it's 55 or not?
Oh, I'm, I'm, I think by.
But that changed the ordinance.
The, I received another email from a resident who asked why that was stricken because the comprehensive plan talked about the need for senior housing and that senior housing was an identified need and that why were we taking out the fact that this would serve senior citizens?
Yeah, Mr. Hawes, I understand it also presented to the senior resource committee that this was to be in over 55 communities. So, I don't understand why we're striking that, that one sentence out. If you feel that it has no impact, but Mr. Hawes is here, it's still a 55 community, right?
Was the discussion around how do, how do we enforce that? Who enforces it or why? If we're going to put it in there? We don't.
Yeah, that's why I said the back half of that sentence, number two, Town Council, take that out, that I don't want to, or future people past me, I don't think that should be the council ordering about that.
Well, this contract zone is, is, has a sunset clause in it if it isn't developed as it's identified. So, if it's identified in this contract agreement that it's a 55 and older, that's, that's what it will be or else the project won't be. Because this con, you know, what you, isn't that so, Jeff?
Right. Any condition of approval that's described in this agreement is a legally enforceable condition that if a party fails to comply with that agreement, then it could become a legal issue in terms of whether the agreement remains valid.
So, the town would be involved at that point?
No, it'd be civil matter. I don't, wouldn't it?
But if they're doing the contract zone and they don't do it.
It'd be our zone, we would be enforcing, but.
It's an agreement between the town and the private property owner.
Let's, Mr. Hawes. Well, the question is, I guess I'm asking on behalf of the lady that emailed me and said, "I thought this was going to be senior housing because it's an identified need in my comprehensive plan." And so, is this, does the removal of this change your, what you're applying for or what you're?
No, it means nothing to me. It's going to be 55 and older. So, you can put it down, whatever you want.
Yeah, sorry, but I can't remember the argument for why we were.
I think it's whether you guys want to be. Enforcer of it, I mean, is.
Yeah, well, no, they're making the town the arbiter of what happens if someone doesn't do it.
Right. Right.
Inserts the town between, and I agree that that's not a good idea.
Sure, but Paul's point is just leave the, the one piece in. Right?
Well, you're in the real estate market. If you feel that the other paragraph up front identifies that, I'm.
The 60 and over, the 55 and older.
55 and older, yeah.
55 older senior community.
Yeah. So here's the, mobile home park will have a written policy, occupant 55, I'm suggesting stop there, period, and then eliminate the.
And then we'll make it a civil matter.
Yeah. But then up here on the, also in the whereas section, the owner would be develop the property for up to 60 lots, mobile home park for senior citizens, the project. It just says senior citizens, it doesn't say over 55. I know I'm being nitpicky, maybe we're still at the 50,000 foot level, but.
Whatever's in this document defines what this zone can be while it's a zone. So if it ever had some different life, it can't as a contract zone.
Okay.
Right.
This is a public hearing. Anybody from the public have any comments? Yes, ma'am.
I'm just wondering why, or what the zone was before. Like, I speak out of ignorance, really, but I always have, I just sort of have this inner feeling when zones are getting changed, that's worrisome to me, you know, in terms of the water, or are any of those things changed, like how close to water, or what you can put on the land? I know it's not good for economic development, not, I mean, I.
Jeff was.
That may be totally irrelevant, but if there was a zone in place, were there reasons for that zone to be put in place? And so how would we justify changing that? And, thank you. Sorry, I'm sure you're more up than.
You were at the last meeting, apparently.
I know, I'm sorry. That's another thing.
So this is our zoning map, a portion of it, and it shows the Mr. Hawes property here, it's outlined here. And it's actually in three different zones. This gray shaded area is the R1 Development Corridor District, it's a rural zone. And then the white area is the R1 Silver Lake section that has additional restrictions for any commercial use that may want to locate in that part of the R1 district. And then this area here, adjacent to Silver Lake, is the RPO, which stands for Resource Protection Shirley and Overlake District. So the contract zone actually would just affect Mr. Hawes' property. This parcel would become the Central Street Mobile Home Park Contract Zone, Overlake District. Also, I have this one here, just to show you, this, this area here outlined in orange is one of two areas in the town where mobile home parks are permitted use. They're not permitted anyplace else except for this area here, and also five miles up River Road in the Route 15 Residential Commercial District.
Inside the area he wants to build now, Jeff, if somebody went through the process, they could put in a 40-lot subdivision houses, correct?
That's correct. Well, I don't know, 40 lots, but whatever.
A number.
Yeah.
They, they could put a subdivision of houses.
Without a contract zone.
Correct.
Change, right.
So all we're doing is saying that instead of putting houses, we're going to allow somebody to put mobile homes?
Correct.
Why did they not have the mobile homes before? Like, why would they have restricted that and said that wasn't a mobile home area?
Well, that came as a result of about a three-year review conducted by the ordinance committee, starting in around 2007 and concluding in 2010 with the adoption of our current land use ordinance. Our current land use ordinance is the one that dictates now where mobile home parks are allowed. I don't recall the exact reason why the council at that time, the ordinance committee, felt that we didn't be that restrictive about mobile home parks in particular.
Because that's where they were at the time. They were already, they were already there in the place, correct?
Well.
Yes.
Well, mostly, but we have, for example, we have a mobile home park located right here, Sherwood Forest Mobile Home Park. That's outside the, the area where they're allowed.
So they went through this process, that they were existing?
They were existing, yeah. At the time of adoption of the ordinance, they were, they were existing. So they are now a non-conforming land use, because they're outside an area where mobile home parks are allowed. And we have another one in town here, Edison Drive Mobile Home Park is non-conforming. But we have two that are, the, the small park at the Twin, the Twin Oaks Mobile Home Park is located here, and the Harriman Cove Mobile Home Park located over here, both conforming because they're in districts where they're allowed, or areas where they're allowed.
And Jeff, for clarification, mobile homes are allowed on that lot, just not mobile home parks?
That's correct. You can have a mobile home on any of these lots as a single development. It's only when you have a collection of them, like you three or more mobile homes on a lot, that becomes a mobile home park, which is not allowed. I think it's a important point. One, that the houses were already allowed there, and two, mobile homes are already allowed there, but not.
As a, as a collective. And subdivisions are allowed there.
I have the projector out, I'll just show you again. This is a, a map showing the watershed around Silver Lake. This is, protects the, our public water supply, and X marks the spot where Mr. Hawes' property is located and where the mobile home park will be located. This, this will be thoroughly looked at during the subdivision review to ensure that this development will not have an adverse impact on the water quality of Silver Lake, and DEP will also be doing their own thorough review of that, that matter.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the public? Again, this is a public hearing. Yes, sir.
Does the mobile home park use the definition by the state of nature of mobile home? So I believe it's an eight and a half by 35-foot vehicle. Is there any way that an 18, or a fifth wheel or an RV could become a residence in this park? And so it could be mixed?
Those are two different animals. A fifth wheeler is a recreational vehicle.
Right.
It's built to a different standard than mobile home parks are built to, so.
I understand that, but if you drive around the state, you will see mobile homes sitting right next to a fifth wheel. And I just wonder if there's anything to prevent that from happening within this contract?
Well, it's, it's limited to the mobile homes, so it doesn't.
Using the main definition of being eight and a half feet wide by 35 feet long and having a steel structure or.
Yeah, there, there are those older mobile homes that you're talking about, there's also HUD certified mobile homes, and there are modular, their homes as well. Modular homes will not be part of this park, it'll be limited to the mobile homes.
Using the state definition.
Either single or double line, it's up to the, the owner of the park to determine if you're going to have single or double line mobile homes. But we have, we have our own definitions of manufactured housing in our land use ordinance that, it's equivalent to the state's definition, the federal definition of manufactured housing.
Within Bucksport?
Yes.
And so this, this park will be limited only to Bucksport's definition of a mobile home. And so they can't put fifth wheels in other vehicles, travel trailers, none of the good on that.
Our, our ordinance actually does not allow recreational vehicles to be occupied as permanent residents, seasonalized and not permanent.
If there's a taxpaying citizen, I see there's 60 more people paying taxes, and I also see probably a rise in the taxes on that one piece of property, the landowner himself.
Any other comments from the public? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing. Clear the public hearing closed. Do we have to act on this? This is just a.
Yes.
Okay. How would the council like to proceed?
Motion to approve.
Sorry.
We have motion and second to approve the draft contract zone agreement. Anything further from the public? Counsel? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, we're going to go on to item 13, discussion items. Not on the agenda for the council or the public. We'll open it up to the public first. Any discussion items that weren't listed here tonight?
Oh, yes. Are we going to have a waterfront committee soon, so we can discuss what we're going to do for, okay. For fixing those docks and possibly adding on. I know that was one of the things I might ask for. Okay, thank you.
Okay, item 14 is upcoming public hearing, designation of topics for committee assignments, and scheduling of committee meetings. We have to schedule a sewer committee meeting to discuss requests for abatement and interest on fees on sewer bills for Robert A. Howard, who is the chairman of the sewer committee.
Paul Goddard.
Want to try to get that before the next council meeting on April 5?
April 12. April 10, busy budget meeting, it starts at.
Okay, it's April 12.
Yeah.
We'll get all the Paul and.
Yep. Because there's also an ordinance committee meeting that's needed, and an appointments committee, appointments to review the applications for, that we will have for planning board, et cetera, for recommendation, as well as an ordinance committee.
He is the chairman of the ordinance.
Yeah. Is that to go over the committee structure and that stuff?
There, there's.
And the food sovereignty.
There's the property maintenance ordinance that you're reviewing with Jeff, and then the committees and introduction to the format for the food sovereignty, I can't pronounce it, sovereignty ordinance would also be.
I mean, your sewer committee isn't going to take 10 minutes, 15 minutes, correct?
I was going to say, that would be 15, and finance would be, I, I mean, appointments would probably be any coordinate.
So if we went 5:30 for ordinance, and then we have a 2, 6:30 to 6:45?
All the way to 12?
Yeah.
5:30 to 6:30 for ordinance?
We don't even have a finance committee for anything, correct? Because we took care of that.
No.
Yeah.
The spectrum thing will go in, and you'll deal with the.
Right.
Whether or not to accept it, if you get the grant.
Yeah, let's go 5:30 to 6:30 for ordinance, and then.
Appointments at 6:30 and.
Sewer 6:45.
Sewer 6:45.
Okay, we'll go to item 15, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.